So let's. Catherine Tinsley is going to be a couple of minutes, so I think we can probably go to announcements as those are pre. And then we'll circle back to public input in case we need to have the recording secretary. So over to you, Steve, for the announcements.
All right, so as we enter our second stage. Of the drought, we just want to echo the fact that the there is a mandatory water ban that's been effective since June ninth of two thousand and twenty-two. The only exceptions for which are allowed and required for health and safety reasons. Only hand watering is allowed between five P M. And nine A M. By a hose or bucket. And this ban actually also includes private wells as well. As we get deeper into the drought. You know, the select board and the Water Commission want to announce that they are going to be starting to fine for offenses. Generally, the way the process goes is, you know, your first is a notice. The second offense is a warning and the third offense is a hundred dollar fine, and that is per the town of Wyndham by laws. So again, I would like to thank all the residents for their understanding and cooperation.
So Peter, you had some background on the water situation. You have any comments here on this announcement?
How are we going?
Peter up. All right. So anyhow, I'll take it then. So stage two drought. As anyone can look outside, see, it's a very serious Ipswich water level is below minimum. And for those new to the town that have their incorrect information, no, we do not get our water from Wyndham Lake. That is Beverly Salem. Resource. So we are dependent on just the wells down by Pleasant Pond that draw the Ipswich watershed. So please abide by these rules and. Turn the sprinklers off, etc. Thank you. Next, Steve.
We're closing in, but we we still have openings on the boards and committees. Every week it gets a little bit better, but as you can see here, there's still several openings. So if anybody out there in the public wants to get involved. We still have a lot of interesting spots available. And open law, open law meeting update is so. The COVID relief. Relief measures put into place for open meeting law that allowed for essentially remote meetings like what we're doing now and more. Comprehensive hybrid meeting template. What expired on the fifteenth of July? And it was signed on the sixteenth by the governor to extend it again through. March of two thousand and twenty-three. So they've been an extension, but. We are internally reviewing the current policy, which is remote meetings only. And looking for, you know, what the next steps are and, you know, kind of. It was a wake up call that, you know, we although we did get the additional extension or all the communities thought the extension. In Massachusetts, there was some planning has to be put in place to move back towards some sort of a public or a hybrid framework.
Any questions, Diane? You're muted.
So I think it was a select board vote that we stayed all remote, and so that's why we're still remote. And we're waiting, I think what you said, Steve, to to find out how we can bring in the hybrid meetings for our committees.
Yeah, I'm currently working with the Board of Health. To look for a recommendation out of them. There was some concern about. What types of improvements Town Hall made with their ventilation as a result of the. The pandemic. So we're looking into that with our facilities manager. I know I'm kind of feeling out their concerns. That they would like to see addressed prior to making a recommendation to come back in person. So that is. That's where we're at right now and, you know, be looking in the near future for, you know, more. Collaboration with the Board of Health and what needs to get done to start to make steps back to in person or. You know, minimum I think of hybrid where the boards can meet in person and have public participation. Root virtually or remotely.
So if I could continue, Gary, if that's all right with you. So do we have a process for hybrid? I think that. The Board of Health recommendation is important to bring back everybody in person, but I also think it's really important that we try to get our boards in. Because there's a lot of boards that would like to be in person and then can also remote. So I was just wondering how our hybrid technology and stuff like that is coming. Maybe you can work on both of them at the same time.
We I can feel that, Gary. We do have remote. We do have hybrid capability in the main meeting room in Town Hall on the first floor. We have looked into technology. It's called the Owl. Meeting camera, which is basically set up for smaller scale. Hybrid type meetings that work really well, like up to like fifteen or so people. At a conference table or on a room with voice recognition and the ability to, you know, scan to the person who's talking and. Use them on the zoo. It's pretty. It's pretty good technology. I've used it quite a bit. So we're looking at, you know, purchasing a couple of those to expand our ability to run meetings simultaneously. And not have a backlog of folks trying to get into the. The main meeting room, which also the current setup there is somewhat cumbersome to operate, particularly by yourself. But with the owl, it's relatively seamless for one individual and a laptop to conduct the meeting.
Right. So the owl could be, we could do that maybe in the smaller conference room, but in the main room, this, the, on the first floor that has that. Capability, I thought that we worked with through the H W Cam that we would need them to. So we really only do for the. Larger board meetings.
Yep. Well, I mean, you could use the owl there too, but that is the room that we have the capability. To do a zoom through, you know, H W Cam, and I believe we also could. Effectively do it ourselves through. Our, you know, essentially running a well without the owl, but you we have the cameras and the equipment in place, but that's where it gets a little bit more cumbersome because then you're running. Essentially, you're using the TV cameras and speaker system as your Zoom hookups. So it's not quite as easy as just, you know, like the owl is just an app. So that's why we're looking to make it as easy as possible, user friendly. But if we have, we do have to have a big meeting, we do have that capability with partner.
I I see. So truth be told, I prefer the remote meetings on Zoom. It works really well for me and my schedule, but I do know that a lot of boards would like to get back to. To in person. So I think that we got to listen to the board of help, like you said, check out for the owl, like you said, but also as the board. We need to decide how we're going to allow for hybrid meetings. Are we going to make any recommendations that the board? All needs to be present or and people remote, or it can be a mixture. Is that something that the board has to? Make votes on or we? Because I don't think you get a lot of guidance from the state. That's what I'm concerned about.
All right. Yep. And I believe that that is, it would be a recommendation coming out of the select board's office as to or or a policy put in place that right now. You know, many months ago, years ago, that there was the policy is remote meetings only. You know, and to the extent that that would change it, be looking for the board to. You know, make a vote and change that adopt some policy. That's definitely something we've been talking about a lot because we know it's the direction we need to go.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt on that.
No, that's good. Good discussion because I think we need to go down through the list of committees and look at the size and anticipated. Participation to determine who has priority in the select board room and scheduling wise. And I think if Steve can go ahead and get quotes on the owl technology and the. We'll get the input from Board of Health. We should be able to make a decision at the next meeting, hopefully. You think, Steve?
I would think so, yeah.
Right. So we'll put that on the agenda then for. First meeting August.
Fucking decided that you guys should be parking there like.
So someone's interrupting there, please. All right. So. Next announcement then, Steve, we're on to.
All right. So we have a this, this. C O A Director offered up the, the, the Aging Resource Center building located at ten School Street is a cooling center. This is for any folks that want to try to escape the heat. It's going to be open slightly extended hours from eight A M. To six P M. Where it will be staffed for. Starting tomorrow into Thursday and Friday. So they have, you know, they have A C, a kitchen refrigerator and things like that to bring. Some, some food and drinks with the Roku and Apple TV for entertainment purposes. The Police Department. Has will be doing hourly directed patrols of the location. Or any additional.
In here smells good.
And.
Chocolate. What's that? It is true.
I don't know who. M. Princey. Yeah, thank you for muting. All right. Put that cleared up. All right. So thank you for Jim Reynolds and pass the word to neighbors and so forth that the cooling center is available and.
The fire department here just interupted. Also offered their services. If anybody needs any additional assistance, they are. Their services are available and to call with whatever needs you might.
And I believe Jim said the the C O A van would be available during the normal hours if anyone needs transportation to the cooling center as well as that correct, Steve?
Yes, I did hear that. And if you need any additional information, it's currently. A blast went on all town social media accounts. It's on the front page of the website. And Jim Reynolds is also, he has an internal email blast that he's sending out to all the folks he he deals with on a regular basis.
All right. Thank you.
All right. On the first, the first in update, we, this has been a long time coming, but it looks like we're just about. Ready to kick off the competence competent class study, which was put into motion eighteen, maybe even twenty-four months ago. With one of my predecessors. So this is what the consultant will be using is Gov H R USA. And they will be going through about twenty-five non-union and twenty-five union positions and looking for salary comparisons and. And internal equity amongst the pay structure across the various positions within town. So it's always a good thing to review, make sure that you stay, you know, competitive in the marketplace. And also make sure your folks are paid fairly and equitably. Considering their various levels of. Of tasks and responsibility. Another piece of good news is we just got word from. Representative Bellacino that we had, you know, it was almost kind of like a wish list item we had submitted. She said there could be some funds up for grabs in the economic recovery bill that they have up at the State House, and we asked them for a hundred thousand dollars for the. The town to design, construct and install a bio retention system. Down at the the Bueker School in the corner of the field. So what this is is another name for him is called a rain garden. It's effectively takes stormwater runoff that would otherwise be going into our. You know, the the stormwater drains and the drains on the side, on the side of the road that you see. And then essentially eventually draining into various wetlands as an outflow. It turns it into a essentially a. A rain garden that catches this flow of water and through several layers of purposely deposited sediment. Filters the water and deposits the water back into, you know, the groundwater supply bypassing the. You know, the stormwater runoff drainage system and into the wellings for contamination. So that is, it's it's in the development bill. It was passed last week. And and it's going to, it's going to go to the Senate probably towards the end of the month. It's good news. And then so we just, I was just talking with Rich Souza. He is just wrapping up all his. Gone through all the R F Ps for paving, milling, sidewalk. Things like that. So he's wrapping up all the contracts. We'll be wrapping up this week if they're not already done already. And to start all his paving. So you'll see him out there in full force doing, doing all the way out this summer. And I see we have both chiefs on the, on the Zoom tonight. I know that there has been some. Questions still around the, the spillage enclosure on one A. So I don't know if, you know. One of the chiefs could kind of put some closure onto that. So what the final findings were. If there's any recourse that needs to be taken by the by the town.
Thank you, Steve. I can, I can talk to that. We actually lucked out. They were pleasantly surprised. The cleanup crew I was on scene, as was Chief Kavanaugh. And a few other police and fire personnel, and they expected it to be a much larger cleanup. As as you folks know, there's a lot of. Specific parameters in place relative to that type of cleanup, and we expected it to be a longer, denser. Process ended up being, I believe they said only two barrels, which they were expecting a lot more. And we were able to get out of there and. It was about a four to five hour period, which was a dream scenario on that street at that time of the day, when it could have been, could have been.
Hi, great.
And Steve, perhaps for the public does know that the actual incident revolved around the hydraulic leak on a truck that.
That's correct. The trash truck blew hydraulic line.
So that spilled between Perkins Street and Arbor Street on Route one A. And we had to cover with sand and then get the other town sweepers come in to assist. Is that correct?
It was actually forty gallons, roughly forty gallons of hydraulic fluid.
All right.
And immediately we used every bit of our speedy dry plus the company brought speedy dry. And I immediately put a call into the state for the state sander to come out, and they just put it basically a dirt road down. Which was a great thing because it. After above four hours, it actually started to rain, so it actually soaked most of it up. So what you see in the road is just basically staining, which is going to happen anyways.
All right. Any other questions on that, Diane or Peter?
I, as. Chief Kavanaugh knows, I actually watched a lot of that process and it was amazing to watch them clean that up as fast as they did. It was really very impressive.
Yes, definitely. Well done, all involved. All right. Any other announcements or updates to Steve?
Nope, nothing to add this evening.
All right. Then Chair's report. I just remind people to stay hydrated and well with this heat wave. Also. There is outdoor recreational opportunities. Sunday's music in the park continues and. There's also the ability to find plenty of shade, as we said, either at C O A Center or of course make use of Pingree Park as well. Get out of the sun. Diane, anything?
No, I don't really have much to share. Thank you.
Peter? Nope. All right. So onward then. Or actually, we should, now that we have Catherine is Tinsley, welcome. You're online. Okay?
I am. Thank you.
All right. So let's circle back then. And if anyone wants to have, we use the public input period here. So if Michelle or Steve, if you can mark for anyone that like to speak on a subject not on today's agenda. Any hands?
Apparently see no hands up.
All right. All right, Michelle, then let's fast forward to. The consent agenda. That's yours, Diane.
Is it?
I know it's Peter's Peters now. I'm too used to you doing it. So Peter.
Oh, I moved to release the Wyndham Select Board Meeting Executive Session Minutes for. June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, October twenty, two thousand and twenty. November third, two thousand and twenty, November tenth, two thousand and twenty, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Oh, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
All right. Well, I'm going to do these second. There's a second and roll call vote. If there's any other questions or comments on the executive sessions. All right, then roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And Peter, your second motion then?
I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board Meeting Minutes of June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
For the comments, questions, if not roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Onto new business then, appointments.
So I move to appoint James Cummings to the Veterans Committee for a term beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I said, Peter, close seconds.
Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Steve, Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So please, anybody that's not on the board, please mute yourselves so we don't get this background noise coming in. Thank you. Right, next one.
I move to appoint Tracy Watson to the Wish, one of issues of Social Service Health, thank you, Committee for a term beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Peter seconds.
Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Is there one more? Yes.
I move to appoint Deirdre Parati from the, as a FinCom rep to the Master Plan Advisory Committee to serve as the Finance Committee's representative. Oh, I said that twice for a term beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Right, sorry.
Second. Questions, comments, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So I think that's the appointments for tonight.
I'd like to thank those guys.
So thank you to those that are currently working to our new appointees. And as we said before, there's still some vacancies available. All right, on to the. Employee appointments, please, Diane.
So I move to appoint Deputy Chief Jeffrey W. Baxter as the Fire Prevention Officer for a term beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. We can do them all together.
I want one at a time because we've got some other appointments as well.
Okay.
Peter, Peter seconds.
All right. I'll assume no comments on these. So roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
I move to point Ronnie Scott Owens is Call Firefighter for a term beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Peter seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to appoint Les W. Kernan, John D. O'Grady, Zach W. Shuts, Jody E. Joyce. L S E. Mewo as provisional firefighters effective immediately and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Peter seconds.
And comments, perhaps we should let Chief Kavanaugh speak to this quick.
Yes, these five interns just finished up the intern program that was run by Deputy Chief Dan Sullivan with the help of Lieutenant. Anthony Nickus. And they did such a great job. They. They've all done a great job. Getting ready for the Fire Academy, which is going to start in November. And this is a great program to get them through and. Not many departments do it, and we're one of the few that does. And this is how we keep firefighters coming within the fire department.
Sounds good, chief. Any other questions, comments, Peter or Diane?
I just want to apologize if I said anybody's name wrong. I'm sorry.
Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And go ahead. You going to go first?
Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, so we just made a small clerical error. So we're just going to do two motions, I believe. We're going to move to remove. Call Fire Captain John H. Joyce as a.
You're you're leaving him as Call Fire Captain. That shouldn't even be in there. It's you're removing, you're removing. John H. Joyce from Fire Lieutenant. We don't even know. We don't even know how that got on there, but.
So we're moving to remove John H. Joyce as a Fire Lieutenant effective immediately.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So congratulations to Fire Captain John H. Joyce. You're back to your. Previous appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Corrected. Okay, Chief. Denaply, if I can jump in here, do you want to make an introduction here?
Sure. And I I know Mr. McGinn was on before. I don't know if he bounced off. My concern is he's working currently for the Massachusetts Department of Children and Families, and he's. He was on call, so his concern is that any second he could be called off. So I'm not sure if Sean is on. Nonetheless, I'd still like to introduce him as a candidate. For part-time police officer. We're we're excited to have him on board after a thorough process. This was part of our testing process. From earlier in the year. He did a really good job with that. He had put in for the full-time process. And he has a full-time certified police officer, having worked in at the Burlington Police Department. He's currently full-time at Department of Children and Families out of Salem. He's got a bachelor's science degree from Salem State University. So he's, he's comes up with some great experience. Did a really good job in the process and with the thorough vetting process we do in the background, and we're we're proud to have him on board.
Very well. Questions, Diane or Peter?
Nope.
Let's have the motion then.
Move to appoint Sean McGinn as a part-time police officer effective August first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Peter seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So welcome, Sean McGinn, and proud to have you serving in the town of Wyndham. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
All right. So Steve, you want to refresh us in the background on this one?
Yeah, sure. So this is. So I, everyone's aware that we're, we've scheduled a special town meeting for. In October. With the town of Wyndham, and this is goes along with one of the Warren articles. So as part of the funding for the feasibility study. For the the new school, for the Hamilton Wyndham School District. It will likely be a debt exclusion on. As as one of the Warren articles. And to the extent that the debt exclusion passes the special town meeting, it will then need to go to a ballot vote. So the intention is to have that ballot vote appear on the the state primaries in September. So if you want to switch slides. Here is the proposed wording. So we've had bond counsel, local counsel, and also counsel for the. Hamilton Wyndham School Committee has all reviewed this wording. Everybody is on board. And this would be submitted to. The Secretary of the Commonwealth in per, in the physical form, no later than the third, if it's going to be on. the Secretary of the Commonwealth, uh, in per, uh, in the physical form, no later than the third, if it's gonna be on the, um, if it's gonna be on the ballot. So it's why we're kinda doing this ahead of, uh, the Warren Article Review Meeting, which will be the next meeting, because we wouldn't have it in time.
So, uh, we're meeting a state, uh, required deadline of three August. That's why it's here tonight. And, uh, as Steve said, thoroughly vetted by, uh, multiple councils. So any questions, Diane or Peter?
Nope.
So this is like the part two, we have to vote on this at the special town meeting, which is the primary, but and then it also needs to go on ballot vote and we can, we can jump on the primary, I mean, the.
Yeah, this is on the primary. So if it didn't get on the primary, then, you know, the other option would be to have it on a local election.
Another special, which would have been further off, yeah. Okay, thank you. I didn't realize we had to do that.
All right, so I'm, uh, Diane, I think you need to read the wording and then make the motion.
Read the wording as well, okay.
Yeah.
The wording for the ballot vote is, shall the town of Wyndham be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called the amounts required to pay the town of Wyndham's eligible share of the bond issued by the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School, two thirty-seven Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Massachusetts, zero one nine eight two, including the payment of all costs incidental or related to thereto. And then the motion would be, I move that this Wyndham Select Board vote to place the above debt exclusion question on the ballot at the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two state election and to authorize the town clerk to submit to the Secretary of the Commonwealth, no later than August third, notice of this form of a question and a certified copy of the board's vote with regard thereto.
Peter seconds.
Any further questions or comments? Peter, roll call vote?
Yes.
Diane?
Um, yes.
Gary, yes. Right. So this is part of the long process of, uh, new color building. Thank you. All right. So, uh, as part of, um, review, first start with, uh, Tom Younger, previous interim, uh, town administrator, and now Steve has been working diligently on this, a discussion and look at, uh, revitalizing an emergency management structure and plan for the town of Wyndham. And I believe, uh, previously we had the, uh, that needed documents and training and so forth in place, but I think there's been about a, uh, decade lapse in, uh, active, uh, work in this area, which probably is, uh, as we've seen, uh, you know, hydraulic leak was, uh, a small thing, but we've had that, uh, major fire over on, uh, Cherry Street, what, three or four years back and other potentials around town. So Steve, you wanna give us the background on this?
Yeah, uh, yes, you're, you're correct. I believe the, uh, the management plan we were operating off of, uh, was created in two thousand and two. Uh, so, you know, times have changed, staff has changed, and we're looking to do a, you know, complete one hundred percent overhaul of the plan. So with that, we're looking for the board to adopt a new management structure. Where currently, uh, it has a director and a co-director. We were looking at, um, creating a, um, structure that, uh, included four individuals, uh, to, to, uh, divvy up the, the, the duties and responsibilities. Uh, you know, and effectively, uh, emergency management plan is, you know, in a nutshell, it's, it's a plan um, on how you're gonna respond and the coordination of the response for emergency disaster situations. So, um, you know, like the, the national grid, uh, gas leak incident that hit up at the Merrimack Valley, you know, major incidents like that, health risks, risks, uh, you know, so it's really just, it's, you know, the response to that. And also the, the organization, uh, uh, and the collaboration between, you know, the different, the locals, local public safety, uh, you know, state agencies, federal agencies, uh, the different vendors that, you know, kinda get drawn in situations like this. Um, you know, you just wanna be prepared for, you know, any, any situation that, that comes down the road. You know, uh, you know, both chiefs again are here, if they, you know, they can probably speak, uh, a little bit more granular than I can. Or if they wanna add anything, or we can just keep moving on.
Sure, I can, I can jump in, Steve. And Gary, we jinxed ourselves because Chief Kavanaugh just called me on the side and said he had a heat-related call, so he had to clear. So, um, yeah, I, I wanna thank Steve for, you know, meeting with us on several occasions. Well, um, myself, you know, Deputy Baxter and Deputy Lucan Tony and Chief Kavanaugh have talked about it numerous times. Uh, and we're, you know, we're kinda fine-tuning our approach. And I think we're at a, we're at a point now where we have a really solid jumping off point relative to the, the command structure, um, you know, with Steve's guidance on this. I, I think it makes sense that, you know, a real strong delineation of the duties for each person. So instead of just kinda throwing out there, hey, we're all responsible for it. We, you know, it, it was a thought process and cumulative ideas to have each one of us responsible for different parts of the process, whether it be, uh, grant writing, you know, equipment inventory, uh, training, whatever it is, and we're gonna break that down, um, you know, clearly. So we understand what our own individual responsibilities are. And then, uh, you know, with vacations and illnesses and, and cost of service, one, one or two of us could be tied up. So I think it's important, uh, for our conversations, what we had with Gary and Steve as well, to, to have that backup plan in place. Should one or two of us not be available. And, um, I'm confident, uh, with the team we have. Uh, it's gonna take some time to get it right and to get the new plan kinda up to date. Uh, but I think we'll be, uh, we'll be in really good shape.
Yeah, certainly, um, you know, the, most of us in Wyndham feel pretty secure with their, both the great, uh, fire and police departments. But we do need to look at the larger, uh, potential of major issues. And some, many people might not know that we have a major natural gas transmission line going through, uh, Wyndham. And of course, uh, Beverly Airport, uh, there's, you know, hopefully not, but the potential there as they, uh, uh, include land from Wyndham as well. And so I think, uh, this is something not only from a practical spin point of being able to respond to anything that might happen, but, uh, we also need to understand that, uh, there's liability if we don't have up-to-date plans and personnel that, that would respond to any sort of, uh, incident we have. So over to, uh, Diane and Peter, questions, comments?
We have a couple more slides to.
Oh, yes, yes. So, uh, let's go.
Yeah, just, you know, and just to add the, uh, you know, the leadership of the, uh, emergency response, uh, team would, you know, there's significant amounts of training that they would undergo and, uh, keep current, uh, so they can stay, uh, uh, apprised of all the, uh, you know, the current information, uh, how to, how to respond to situations like this. Switch the slide. And this is effectively the structure that, uh, we are proposing tonight. Uh, let's say we're going from, uh, two to four individuals. So you have the, uh, this is in order of, um, you know, the, the command order. So the emergency, uh, director would be one, followed by the deputy director. And then the training coordinator and inventory control specialist. So the emergency director and the deputy director would effectively be, uh, would be a shared role with, uh, very similar duties and responsibilities. So, you know, things like housing, shelter in an emergency, um, you know, animal, animal, animal shelter, saving, you know, saving people's pets, uh, not, not just humans, uh, you know, securing, securing homes, uh, generators and, and imagine, uh, emergency power grids, uh, coordinating medical resources, uh, facilities and supplies, uh, personnel designation, uh, mobile command centers, budgeting, uh, and then just maintaining job descriptions and the, the general administrative duties of, uh, of maintaining the, the emergency plan. And the training coordinator, inventory specialist would, you know, as their name suggests, they would, uh, you know, we get to maintain an inventory of preparedness equipment so that you can respond to, to anything. And then all the equipment in there has to be routinely, routinely inventoried and made sure that, you know, any certifications and inspections are, are done routinely, uh, to stay within date of compliance, uh, in any licensures. And then, as you saw on the slide before, training coordination needs someone who's going to be, um, you know, staying up to date with all the training and making sure all the members are up to date, have all their credits. They're re-getting their renewable, uh, continuing ed credits. And then again, in both areas, there's significant grants that become available to the state, federal government to help, help fund these things. So there'd be, everybody would be on the lookout, um, you know, to, to, to write and try to qualify for any grants available.
Thank you, Steve. Peter, Diane, questions?
I, I think this is a great exercise. And when I had my, uh, great tour of Wyndham with, uh, Chief Kavanaugh, we stopped at that gas relay. And he told me that I think within the last year and a half, they did a, uh, a really good exercise where there was a, a problem there. And it was amazing how much stuff they had to do. So this is, and that's the one that worries me the most, is that gas line.
Yes. Diane?
So I also agree. I think this is wonderful. It's a good idea. My quick question for Steve is, who runs the trainings? On the slide before that, there were all those, like, courses listed. Who runs them? And would that be just those four people or would the stat, the departments also do that, the police department?
Yeah, I mean, um, I believe it's through MEMA and FEMA and the various state and federal agencies. But, um, and it would be, just be the team of, uh, individuals assembled and under the structure. Uh, but Chief Denaply might be able to add.
Yeah, I was in touch with the, um, the regional, there's, I guess, it's broken down more than I thought it was. And I was able to make contact with the local regional coordinator from MEMA of Essex County. And so it, it kinda, it, it, uh, tightens it up a little more specific to our area. And he was super accommodating and gave me, uh, the list of training, which it's, it's about thirteen classes to get emergency management directors up and running. Most of them fortunately are online, uh, but some of them are in person. And then it, it kinda, it, it spills off into extra training for our, our personnel as well. Not to just include police and fire, but, um, many town employees, um, probably should get some of these as well. So as we dive, Chief Kavanaugh and all of us dive into that a little deeper, we'll have a better understanding through, um, through MEMA, you know, of, of who needs what. And a lot of us have gotten these over the years of, as well. We've all been doing it for a while. And I just don't know how much of that training, um, is current. Uh, if it needs to be redone, if there's been changes. So we'll look into that too. And, and on a side note, Michelle did, did just, uh, put a note that, um, uh, our candidate was able to log back on. So if at any point, um, we could, Mr. McGinn, that would be great as well.
Anything else, Diane or Peter?
No, thank you.
All right. So, uh, I think on the next slide, Michelle, we have a motion to, uh, start this process.
I move that the Wyndham Select Board vote to vote to approve the Emergency Management Plan Management Structure to be comprised of four individuals, two from fire, two from police, and be structured as illustrated in the previous slide, graphic.
Peter seconds.
Anything further? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So just to interrupt, people, please, uh, check your mute button. And we're getting a lot of, uh, background talk this evening. So please, if you're not on the board or staff, please mute. All right. Very well. Thank you for, Chief Denaply for that. And, uh, Steve, I know this is a lot of work and we'll get moving forward on the emergency plan. All right, item D.
Okay, this is, um, this is a, this is a vote asking the select board to vote to approve the call of the library union. Um, as previously discussed, uh, the, uh, consistent with the rest of town and, uh, town employees, they, they look for a two percent uh, call over the wage table that was effective for FY twenty-two, essentially adjusting all the wages by two percent consistent with the rest of the town.
Questions, comments, Diane or Peter?
Didn't we already do this?
We, uh, we, uh, in the executive session, yes, we, uh, got the background on this, but that requires a, uh, public vote on the contract. Change. All right.
And, and so this is, this is the last year of this agreement that we would need to do this each time, as we'll be doing a new contract, I guess is the word, next year. Is that right?
Yep, the background is that the, the contract when negotiated three years ago had no COLA provisions, but what it did have was a provision allowing, uh, the reopening of negotiations each year for the sole purpose of, uh, negotiating COLA. And past practice has been, um, uh, arriving at the COLA that is consistent with what was applied to the rest of the town employees.
All right, so we'll, uh, we can have the motion read, and this will be the, uh, public open session, uh, approval of this, uh, item.
So I move that the Wyndham Select Board approve that fiscal year twenty-twenty-three wage table in the collective bargaining agreement covering the period from July first, twenty-twenty to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, covering all AFL-CIO Council ninety-three, local twenty-nine oh five employee salaries shall be amended to provide a cost of living increase fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, covering the period seems repetitive of July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three of a two percent over the wage table in effect for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which covered the period of July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Peter seconds.
Anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you.
And this is, uh, the previously, I believe, two meetings ago, the board set the date and time and location of the special town meeting. And this, this vote here would officially open the warrant for, uh, any citizen-sponsored, uh, petitions for articles. And also for the board to have discussions on, um, any, uh, select board sponsored articles, which, uh, I will present them with a, a list of, uh, items that could potentially be on the meeting and be in the meeting, uh, next on the ninth, I believe it's the ninth, Tuesday the night.
So as we've done in the recent past, we've, uh, made the, uh, offer and the strong urging for any citizens that are doing a citizen's petition, please bring it forward as soon as possible so that, uh, our town council can assist you in making sure the wording and the structure is correct so that we don't, as we've had in past instances, uh, waste town meeting time on, uh, measures that, uh, had no effect because of the, uh, miswording or whatever. So, yeah, the offer's out there. If you're gonna have a citizen petition, please bring it into, uh, Steve and we'll get, uh, KP Law to make sure it's in the right, uh, format. Otherwise, anything else, Peter or Diane? All right, so the, uh, schedule here, so one October for the, uh, town special town meeting, uh, opening the warrant tonight, uh, closing it on the twenty-third. And, uh, so we, uh, right after that, we'll have to get into the, uh, printing and, uh, those deadlines to get everything ready for town meeting. All right. The motion.
Yeah, so a little drumroll. I move that the Wyndham Select Board vote to open the warrant for the October first, twenty-twenty-two special town meeting until I nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and to close the warrant on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
He, Peter seconds.
And the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Uh, I just a question for, uh, Chief Denaply. Do we just wanna, like, Sean's on?
Yeah, okay, that's, uh, before we go into F here, is, uh, Chief, do you wanna introduce Sean McGinn, our new officer? Sean, are you on?
Yep, uh, and I'm, I'm excited to do so, Sean. I explained to them that you were, you were working. So there was a good chance this was gonna happen. So we're glad you could hop on. Sean's gonna be starting after, um, Au- August first. Um, we're excited to get him on board. He comes to us with some great experience. He's gonna be a, a big help to fill some of the vacancies. He's going to be a, a big help to fill some of the vacancies that we have. And he's a big part of the future of, of our department. So Sean, if you want to, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chief Denapoli. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm really excited to, you know, join the team over in Wyndham. And I think I bring a unique experience. I work for the Department of Children and Families as my full-time job now. And I have experienced, I'm officer in Burlington. So bring a unique perspective to the job and excited to start. And I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Sean. And we've already taken the vote and you're in. So looking forward to you on the one August. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Congrats, Sean.
All right. Then circle back to F then. And Steve, you want to bring us in up to speed on this item?
Yeah, this, this requires no board action. This is an update. I probably could have put it in with my updates, which is something I wanted to put on the board's radar. The residents at 17 Friend Court filed a claim for damages on their vehicle due to a fallen limb. Evidently that the tree that dropped the limb on, on their damages, we had initially denied the claim. Now it's under appeal and it is becoming evident that the tree that dropped the limb was, had a limb down in the road back in a storm in 2018. So that may, may qualify for prior notices as a problem tree. So I just wanted to get, you know, get it out there so the board's aware of, you know, a little back and forth that's going on with, with the resident and that we're working with council and our Maya reps to work through that and make sure we take care of it.
Any questions, Diana or Peter?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
All right. Last item this evening, item G. So we've talked to Opera before. We obtained quite a bit of a background information between the two select board meetings here. So I'd open up to Diane and Peter to your comments on a process to determine spending and not for particular votes or selections this evening, but what general criteria or areas you think Opera should be headed towards? Volunteers to go first, Peter or Diane?
Sure. I, I, I think we should just do a very simple scale, three, three-part scale. Need to have, or actually to, need to have, nice to have.
Diane?
To have, let's see. Yeah, I was thinking that we should probably all somehow try to rate them all and see what we come up with. I was, I was thinking of different words, but need to have sounds easy. I can't find my list now.
No, certainly. Anything else, Diane?
No, I guess the words got.
Well, I would add in a couple of angles too, that given that this is, you know, a once in a lifetime or once in forever type of money, that perhaps we should look to allocate it to those things in the need to have. Also on the basis of what's going to give us long-term return and long-term utilization on, on whatever we go forward with. So I'm thinking that.
I like that, Gary.
Yeah. We scrub the list. Certainly some things that, as you saw, there's requests are related to iron rail, which I think begets a much larger question of what to do with the iron rail property in the long term. So that we probably need to expand that a little bit, Steve. And, you know, wouldn't want to dump money into something that's going to have to have a different status going forward. The lot of the items that I would say are those things that maybe year to year don't make the cut on the budget, but are really just ongoing expenses. So those we look at, and I think too, that we ought to look at what monies we can add this opera that we can invest or place in trust funds so that they'll actually have a positive impact over the long term rather than just being a one-time spending. So I would suggest that we look at putting some money, I believe the lost revenues from iron rail could be claimed and roll right into free cash that the trust fund like the cemetery, we might allocate some money into. And that would eventually, as the perpetual care fund builds up, would hopefully eventually take the entire cemetery budget off the annual line. And then there's some things I would think that there are the gift funds that might be plus up, given the conditions of low interest rates over the last decade, combined with the anticipated inflation going forward. And such as the Albee Dodge Tree Fund, or perhaps the Cemetery Flower Funds, or I think the, the War Memorial. And this is well established financially, but we really don't have any particular funds or backup for items such as the Civil War Monument, the Hugh Peter Monument and so forth around town that perhaps we could establish. And then finally, I would say that the act pushes and includes provisions that we can assist nonprofits in town that suffered from COVID. And I know we had the numbers provided to us from the Wyndham Museum. So I'd urge us to take a look at that. Process wise, it sounds like that we need to adopt a scale, perhaps as Steve can look at that. And then each of us individually, you know, prioritize what we think justified to spend opera money on. And I think individually, we may need to ask Steve to go back to the departments and get some background information on particular purchases or recommendations. How's that sound, Diane, Peter?
I think that sounds like the right thing to do.
I think the first step is to go back and talk to the department heads and get more information.
All right.
Would you want to have? Would it make sense to have a, invite the department heads to a meeting and have them go through their requests? Are there any questions that come up you can ask or do you want?
It might be more efficient if each of the board members have questions on particular items that we pose those questions to department heads, and then the response comes back to all three to give us the necessary added information. And then timeline, I'm thinking that perhaps either at the, what is the, one of the two August meetings, we can agree to the criteria and then do our homework, grading it all. And then perhaps at the first meeting in September, we can take a look at the, the top vote getters. How's that sound, Diana or Peter?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
All right. So Steve, you got all that?
Got it.
All right. So, so Opera, yeah. So, you know, we got, I think about 1.3 million. And that has to be obligated for the next couple of years. And did do the, what, the water generator? But I think we need to get going on this because of long lead times. Cause I think what Eric said today that the generator is about a one-year delivery period.
Yeah. Yeah. So 100,000, we're getting approximately about a $1.4 million pot of money. And we've already allocated, like you said, $100,000 for the water generator.
Right. So I appreciate the original inputs from the departments, but so let's set a, what's a reasonable deadline, Diane and Peter, for the three of us by a week from today to pose any questions through Steve to the department heads on the items?
Week from today. Sure.
Right. Does that give us enough time, Peter?
I'm going away for like the next eight days.
Okay.
And what I'd really like to do is I'd love to have somebody take us on a tour through iron rail. Like, it's a, it's a, it's a million bucks.
Yeah. So so let's, you're coming back, what, next, a week from tomorrow?
I will be back the 28th.
All right.
But I'm booked solid that day. That's why I'm coming back.
Yeah. So how about Diane, you want to take a look at iron rail?
Sure.
All right. So how about what, a week from Friday?
The 29th?
Yes, for a iron rail onsite tour. Can we get that arranged, Steve, with Mike Hardy and probably should invite and see the availability of the iron rail commissioners? Or if not, you know, it's, it's just a look and see and learn kind of a tour with Rich, Susan, Mike.
Yeah. So do you want, yeah, so we could post, first of all, at the posted joint meeting, if it was with the iron rail or we, or we could post a select board meeting with just staff. So I mean, let me, let me get ahold of Lou and I'll see, I'll see if he wants to, you know, have his folks there and, but I'll coordinate it a week from Friday. Or whether or other, you guys can just show up and we'll take care of the paperwork.
All right.
We're talking morning?
Whatever works. I mean, we can, I'll start getting on schedules with Michelle and see if we can coordinate it through email.
Okay.
Right. All right. So that that's the Friday, what, the 29th?
Yes.
Yeah. So let's make 30, 31. So let's make, give us the weekend and maybe by Tuesday, the second to have.
Questions?
Yeah, have all the questions in and we get the responses. And that will give us a, a week to get the responses by the nine August select board meeting. How's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
So these are questions, so these are questions to the department heads on any of their proposed.
Yeah. So, yeah. So if you want more details on any of the items, you know, send an email question to Steve and he'll file them out to the department head, right?
Thank you.
And we'll want to get all our questions in by first or second of August. We'll get the replies back by the select board meeting on the night. And then probably on the ninth, we'll confirm the process going forward from there. All right.
And then a couple of things I just, so two things I saw that I'm going to be, you know, to have in your mind when going through it. And I'll be, I'll sit, I'll request these through email is IT initiatives. So the trust set us up for the future. Right now, there's a lot of, you know, even low hanging fruit that we could take care of as far as, you know, just remote capability, cybersecurity, things like multi-factor authentication are going to be required. Safety features that are coming down the pike in a year or two and be kind of spendy. So it might be something we want to set ourselves up, you know, to, to get out ahead of some of these things where we have the added funds here. And the other piece being is any costs that are directly related with the pandemic as far as staffing costs, equipment costs and things like that for, we talked a bit about earlier tonight about a hybrid meetings and what type of equipment we're going to have, or we're going to need for that to build into flexibility. So we can have, you know, multiple meetings. We don't want the buildings to be open, any additional costs. I mean, how many meeting rooms we're going to have and have to need available at any given night, if it does go to the mandatory hybrid meetings. And then I know that the planning board, not the planning board, the planning department, the master plan, you know, administratively is turning into, you know, quite, quite the project. And with the limited hours we have there, maybe we need some temporary relief for the 12 months or so to get a little bit more manpower to, to handle the, the staff portion of that with only one 19-hour week employee. But that's, that's all.
And I believe too, the, the opera provides for using opera money to do all the paperwork for Opera. Is that correct?
That's also correct.
Yeah. So we may have to expend some amount of money to get some assistance in the finance department or planning or purchasing on this too.
Right.
Because I believe as we've seen on the CARES Act and prior, that the paperwork from the federal level is quite extensive requiring what the photographs and so forth.
Yes, it is. And also that if you speed, I had to look it up, but there's certain spending thresholds that if you exceed a certain amount of, I think, percentage of funds spending thresholds per year, you trigger mandatory independent audits of the expenditures, which is also going to be costs. You know, there's just no way around would have to have a CLA or a similar firm like that to do an audit on the expenditures for the projects.
We'll keep those things in mind as well. Otherwise, last thing scheduled going forward. So August, we're planning nine and 23 August. Good for Peter and Diane. I think we agreed previously.
Yeah.
Right. And that leads us into September being, what's the first Tuesday right there after Labor Day?
It's the 6th, but we pushed it to the 7th.
Yeah. So we are looking at Wednesday, the 7th and Tuesday, the 20th of September. And I think that flows in well. That gives us about 10 days ahead of a special town meeting for that second September meeting.
Yeah.
All right. So anything else? Otherwise, Peter, your turn for the motion? You're muted.
With nothing further to left to further discuss, I move that we adjourn the July 19th, 2022 select board meeting at 7:47.
Second.
And thank you to Catherine and all the staff that put all the hard work getting this kind of expensive meeting together. All right. Thank you. So roll call vote on the motion, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And the meeting is adjourned.